Let's not go in and stand.
Good afternoon and welcome to the February 16, 2022 regular meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Arthur Riddick, the 2022 Chair of the Board. I am joined this afternoon by Vice Chair Linda Hoffler, Commissioner Jack Owens, Commissioner Ray Freeman, Commissioner Jonathan Craddock, County Manager Tim Wilson, County Attorney Philip Godwin, Clerk to the Board Jolitha Chestnut. I also at this time want to recognize our elected officials in the House. We have Representative Howard Hunter in attendance this afternoon, and we have Superintendent Barry Williams for the School Board, and we want to also keep in prayer the Chair of the School Board, Mr. Ray Felton, who is in the hospital. I see a board member, Lieutenant Byram, in the audience as well. So, welcome to everyone this afternoon. At this time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Ray Freeman to lead us in prayer and fast of allegiance.
No stand?
If we're all standing, please, bow your heads. Our Father God, Yahweh, Yahweh, we are blessed to be in this particular situation and in this room this day to carry on business as you have set forth for us. We appreciate each and every one's involvement. Father God, lead us in the right directions to make good decisions in the name for this county, for the state, and for our great nation.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioners, you have the agenda before you. Are there any adjustments to the agenda? I think we have an updated copy.
Madam Chair, I have an update to the consent agenda.
Okay, let's do the regular agenda first.
Okay.
Are there any adjustments to the regular agenda? Here and now, we can take a look at the consent agenda, and after the consent agenda, we'll hear from our honorable Reverend Representative, excuse me, Howard Hunter III. I elevated you a little bit. Okay, the consent agenda adjustments?
Madam Chair, I would like to remove Budget Amendment 18 because that is a budget item, budget for the budget.
Okay.
Is that D?
Is that D?
Yes.
D is in David.
Correct.
Madam Chair, that was my, going to be my motion to the agenda.
Okay, then I also have another one. Same reason, the budget issue, and that is number 22, which is F.
Twenty-two, which is F, or G. There's H.
Fiscal year.
F.
Okay.
Twenty-two, zero, twenty. Are there others? Madam Clerk, we have removed Budget Amendment, Budget Amendment F-22018 and Budget Amendment F-22020 because of budget.
Madam Chair, make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as changed.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
It's been properly moved in the second that we make the adjustments to the consent agenda and record as noted. All in favor?
Aye.
So move. Now, we will hear from the Honorable Representative Howard Hunter III.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Chairwoman Dr. Riddick, Commissioners Freeman, Hoffler, Owens, and Craddock, Manager Wilson, Attorney Godwin. It's good to be here tonight. I'm Representative Hunter, not Reverend Hunter. I'm a long ways from Reverend. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening pertaining to the North Carolina budget. I voted for the budget because it was good for northeastern North Carolina. There were nine Democrats that initially voted for this budget, and we all took a beating. But what my colleagues didn't know, that we asked the Governor to come to the table to help with negotiations. Once we got all that we needed, not wanted, but needed, he put out a press release saying that he would sign this budget. It was a bipartisan vote that passed overwhelmingly. This budget brings over 4.2 million to local governments and community-based organizations in our district. I had my LA, Gloria Williams, the former County Manager in Hurford County, to contact Chairwoman Riddick to see if anything was needed in Gates County. Thanks to their conversations, we identified a few things here, a couple of things here in Gates County. Congratulations. You will be receiving a check from the state for $250,000 for funding for your community center renovation project, which will also house or allow seniors to use the building. I believe there was only two counties without a senior center with this money, and that's only going to be one, and Gates County is not that one. Gates County will also receive $20,000 in funds for the Sheriff Department for body cameras. Representing Tier One and Tier Two counties, where residential taxes make over 50% of the county's tax base, I am fully aware that every penny counts and is utilized primarily for mandated services. I just want to reiterate, as budget conferee, we successfully negotiated funding to assist local governments and nonprofits in building capacity to position themselves for additional grant funding in recreation, water, and sewer infrastructure, downtown revitalization, et cetera. I urge you next budget year, I will be contacting either by email, letter, or phone calls to go ahead and get your priorities, the stuff that you need for the county, to us early. I know it was last minute, Dr. Riddick, but it worked. Before I end, I see that you stole two great employees from Ahoski, Marty and Jolitha. They're going to do good for you. They were great employees. I'm going to miss them. I want to end with this quote. Working together works. I'd rather have a seat at the table than be on the menu. Congratulations on receiving 250 for your project and 20,000 for your body cameras. I can go.
Mr. Hunter has to go. He's very busy, man. I know, don't run. Just leave. Okay, we're down to public comments. Madam Clerk, do we have public comments for signed sheet?
Yes, ma'am. First will be Mr. Brian Rowntree, subject Economic Growth.
Never mind, everyone. We have five minutes for each speaker, and you can watch your time on the screen there to keep you on task. The name and your precinct.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Brian Keith Rowntree, and my precinct is Gates. I would like to thank the Gates County Commissioners. I would like to thank the Gates County citizens for allowing me to speak this evening. I want to also thank Representative Howard Hunter and the state legislature for the $250,000 to repair the community center. Thank you, Commissioners, for requesting the state appropriation funds. Our current Commissioners have taken the initiative to engage the state to receive funding for our county. I'm looking forward to the Board's future endeavors for the benefit of our community. Gates County, we need to come together as one. We tend to be tribal, based on race and culture. Sometimes, we dismiss people and ideas we don't understand. We have more things in common than difference, and we should use our likeness as the basis of our relationships. We should build a rapport with each other and encourage community harmony. I implore you to develop the friendships with people from outside of your normal environment. It will improve your ability to empathize and serve others for the greater good. Gates County, we are better than the hate that has been displayed recently in our community by a few individuals. I expect our citizens to be positive, loving, and people of truth. We must be able to communicate with one another to be effective. I challenge our citizens to be objective and informed. Don't depend on word of mouth or social media for your truth. Do the research to have an educated perspective based on facts. As accurate information and particulars are available to us, the Commissional Meeting is live and also stored on YouTube, and the Gates County Index provides a level of impartiality. Gates County must promote collaborations with other counties and be aggressive with economic development. We must avoid lost opportunities of the past and work to acquire future state appropriations and federal funding. Here are some examples of how our neighboring counties benefit from the current state budget. Pasquotank County received 2.6 million. That's per capita $64.09. Hurford County received 1.35 million per capita, that's $62.64. Gates County only received $270,000. As you know, $250,000 for the community center, $20,000 for the Sheriff Department. Per capita, only $25.77. Also, including the state budget, was funding for local shovel-ready projects. Chawan County received 6.1 million to purchase the Hayes Farm to make it a local tourist attraction, and an additional 2.1 million to restore the Cadish AME Zion Church that was damaged during Hurricane Isabel in 2003. Quimmens County received 4 million for a marine base commerce park. Gates County must be shovel-ready, to be considered for extended resources from our government and to be considered for grants. We must support the efforts of our county government that prepare us to be competitive in the acquisition of these funds.
You have two seconds.
Two seconds. In closing, I'm all about growth, and I want to see the community support the Commissioners' effort to get appropriated funds for our citizens so that we can have amenities for our citizens and so that we can have a robust economy in Gates County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next?
Next is Colonel Wright, 911, and HS.
High speed unit.
Good evening, Board members, Madam Chairman. I'd like to regress a little bit to last month with the 911 situation. Read the article in the Gates County Index, and it kind of rebuttled of what we said. Nowhere did we ever intend as firefighters or emergency service personnel, we were not knocking for Quimmens County by no means, or talking bad about anyone of the dispatchers. Those personnel over there, under the circumstances, did an outstanding job. We did have a few bumps in the road the first two or three days, which they finally learned, it started to get better, and it's better now, and we are proud of what they have done for us, and we appreciate them so much, you just don't understand. But in the beginning, if things had been just a little bit different, a little bit more understanding between the departments, some knowledge, it would have been entirely different. And I will say, as a firefighter with too many years of service in it, I like the fact that we now have an emergency management person that has a fire background. I think that's fantastic. It's going to take some getting used to from our fire departments, but we'll get there. The 911 center, again, you alluded in the paper, and I brought it up a little bit, and might be some considerations for consolidations later on. Board members, Gates County is the perfect place for it. First of all, we're not sitting in a river. We're not sitting on waterfront. We don't get flooded. The main power lines are right there that are going to be restored first. Hey, that's a plus. Also, fiber optic rings this area. There's fiber optics right in front of the UOC now. The UOC was given to the county for emergency services in the beginning, I believe, for training grounds or whatever, and we put the UOC out there. Now, the Sheriff's Department, thank goodness, has a training range for them. Fire departments, if we can get your help a little bit later on, we would like to be able to put a fire training ground out there with a burned building and a tower to train with. We will probably need your help to secure some grants, but the great thing about that is it's a perfect opportunity to include our high school students. Camden, Pasquotank, Currituck, Quimmens has a fire training program in the high schools, EMS training programs in high schools. We can integrate that. COA could come here and use a training tower. We have the property that was given to us to do with that. I was there. I heard the man speak. Let's take that opportunity and take that piece of ground out there and use it for something, whether it's a communications center, training ground, whatever, but it's there. Let's use that opportunity. Emergency services is just as important as water, fire protection, police protection, all of the businesses that can come here, that's what they want. They want a good fire rating. They want fire departments going to be there, and we need younger people. I'm 68 years old. I hope I get 10 more years, but I don't know. So, I've been in it since I was 19, so I've been in it a long time. I started in Elizabeth City. The next thing, I just want to, Commissioner Owens, who made a comment last week about, last month, excuse me, about the tax increase that we were receiving for revenue, about coming here into county, I have a little caveat for that for you. I looked at my Amazon bill for Christmas and how much I spent in Gates County and never left my house. I didn't have to go anywhere and shop. I didn't have to spend gas. E-commerce is a big thing, too. We need to be thinking about that. We have the fiber optic, let's utilize it. People are spending their money in Gates County. Somewhere else is coming here, but the state and Gates County is getting their money from Amazon, Walmart, whoever, dot com. They're providing funding. The high-speed internet. I read over the Gates County Index two times that it was mentioned that was lack of bandwidth between Sunbury, Holly Grove, and Core Peak and back up that way. Well, there's not a lack of bandwidth. Fiber optic rings that whole area. Now, will Century Link or whatever the new owner release some of those fibers? I don't know. That's out of my ballpark, but that is there. Core Peak is fed right now by fiber for voice and internet. Wiggins Crossroads is fed for voice and internet by fiber. The cell towers are by fiber. The fiber is here. The allocation of it, I don't have nothing to do with above my retired pay grade, but it is here. Fiber rings this whole area. It's one of the best rings in the state, which is again, good for the 911 center. That's something to pursue. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Anthony Saunders, subject All.
Good evening, Board. My name is Anthony Saunders. I reside at 798 Wellington Road in Gates. I'm married to the Dorothy Riddick Saunders for 34 years, who was a community activist in the Hazlet community, which is Drumhill area in the 70s and 80s. My father, Abram Saunders, he served as magistrate here in Gates County for ten or more years. My older brother Dale, he served on the school board representing the Holly Grove Township for 16 years. My younger brother Quincy Saunders, he currently serves as senior magistrate for the last 19 years. I currently serve as chairman of my trustee board at Newman Swamp Baptist Church, and I currently, for the last 10 years, and I currently serve as chairman of the Gates County Democratic Party for the last 12 years. I come here to, I come to many meetings as I can, or I watch this videotape. You keep the citizens informed, whether we understand it or choose to believe it. It appears that there are a number of things in the county that are not operated well, and many of us were either not aware of it or not involved without it, and now the county manager is bringing these things to our attention, and we expect them to be addressed, not to continue to be the covered-up stuff and patched over. No one should be allowed to continue to not do their job or be disrespectful as they do their job because of who you think you may know on the board. How can anyone who just arrived less than a year ago be solely responsible for what has been wrong in Gates County for the last 10, 20, 30 years? We've had 13 county managers in 16 years. Gates County is responsible for that. How can you move forward when the county manager, who is the county administrator, either constantly changing or allowed to do the bad minimum of things? We complain about them on social media and out in the public to each other, who same staff may be responsible for many of the same problems but are not held responsible. I don't have a major issue with the Board. At least, you are trying to do something positive so we can move forward. I've taken notice of a lot of things that the Board is currently doing. When they did modifications at Central Middle School, we were able to save, with the loan, we were able to save a lot of money. They're still working on the water bill system, which the citizens of the county had asked the Board and the county manager to do. All county staff receive the grades during a balanced budget, continuing to reach out to our legislators, Butterfield, Howard Hunter, Steinberg, for grant money to continue to grow the county. The Board continues, to the Board, continue to stay positive. There are many more citizens in the county who support your efforts. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Wade Askew.
Commissioners, Lady Chairman, Mr. Wilson, Mr. Godwin. My name is Wade Askew. I live at 216 White Oak Road in Yore. It's been a right good while since I've come before the Board of Commissioners, but when I heard about dispatch had been closed down here in the county and moved to Velvadie, it kind of upset me a little bit, but of course, when I sat there behind the table, me, the county manager, the emergency manager, and the sheriff, we rode all day long trying to go to different counties and see their dispatch system, how we could improve ours. Every department here in the county depends on y'all. It's your responsibility, just as when I was sitting there behind the county, it was my responsibility. I went to every department on a regular basis to see how they operated, how they needed equipment to operate or whatever, and on this particular day, I went to the tax office. The tax administrator was trying to send out tax bills, but could only print like two a day. That would have been something if we'd had to send our tax department to Chawan County or another county to print out our tax bills. So, I got her on the phone, and she So I got her on the phone, and she found another computer in one of our neighboring counties, Martin County. I took off on my own self, went and picked that computer up, and in two days, we had tax bills going out. Every department is y'all's responsibility. Don't lay blame on anybody from dispatch or anything else. You should be going on a regular basis to make sure, you've got good employees, good people working at dispatch, you've got good people working in the water department, appreciate them. And, and do a quarter. Every quarter, you need to have a employee appreciation day, cook hamburgers, hot dogs, barbecue chicken. Be good to the employees. That's the lifeline of this county, our employees. But moving on from dispatch, let's talk about the land that didn't work its commerce on. Most of you know the Gates Heights out there, you don't even know how it got there. Most of you think it just fell out of the sky. Well, it didn't. It took a lot of work to get it here in the county. It was supposed to have been located in another county. The county, we had made, there had been deals made with the developer 12 years ago. 12 years ago, everything was handed over to another board on silver platter, and they just dropped the ball. There were grants that I know that were coming to the county that were done away with, but that were also reinstated because an interim manager found out what was going on, and he got some grant money reinstated. It was all been sabotaged ever since day one. People didn't want no businesses out there, some people did, some people just wanted to see it fail just simply because it wasn't their idea. I do not agree for the county to buy the property. If you've got, Mr. Wilson, if you've got three businesses that can come, see Al Carr, let him sell the property to the businesses. But I expect if they can come, for the county to hold up to their obligations that they made to developers 12 years ago, and not drop the ball like they did then, and say, no, we don't want no businesses here in the county. If I would have been re-elected and on the board, I can promise you, those businesses would have been there. And I know what businesses were coming. But treat your employees like gold, because they are. And do appreciate them. And that's all I have to say, and thank y'all very much.
Madam Clerk?
First of all, I'd like to say I appreciate the work and all y'all commissioners doing for the county, for your work and your time you spend for them. First thing I wanted to mention was the meeting time, I know, be about at 6:30, it looks like, we went to 9 o'clock last time, and if we're going to go to 9 o'clock, we need to call a catering service and give us something to eat. Just, just to, the courthouse got high ceilings, hard walls, and everything echoes in you. And I can hear it plain, I can hear the voices, good, but can't pick out the words. It's like you're going to a foreign country, and you hear somebody up there in another language talking, you hear it good, but you don't know what they're saying. So that's the kind of situation in this building. And the mics, the microphones just make it worse, seem like, you know. And I don't know what you could do, but, and then too, you speakers like me, I would say it ought to be moved to the side so people can actually see the people instead of behind the back when they're talking, so the people can know what they're saying. I know most people can hear it and get it, but not, not a lot of real lips like me. Okay? I feel like on the land deal, need to meet all the needs, meet the needs of the county first. And really back, our sheriff, bothering the 919, 911. Okay, third thing, our city park, which is across from the ducts, that's the one I'm talking about. The leaves, they've wrapped the boardwalk up, and they're going to rock the boards. Tree, the tree fell across the walkway, all the way across the walkway. And I say clean up the vines and the grass close to, on the creek side where the walkways are, make it pretty there. And maybe in the future, maybe put a little bit more P out there or something for the older people, get up older people in the county, something to look forward to. I know they love to fish in the back. Okay. My fourth thing is, New Ferry Road, boat. Water standing on the road and it ran, if you want to put a boat in there, you got to wear boots, you got to wear boots to go down there, to put a boat in. Do you, do you, do you going to wade in water up to your knees? And most people that fish have just stopped, stopped using them, they go to Canada Fair or somewhere else. Fifth thing, the state. During the, I just saw a job of dragging the dirt roads. Seem like they drag it one way and don't come back the other way and leave dirt on the side of the road in front of houses, piles of dirt, and ditches. They don't clean out the ditches, you call them, they'll tell you, yeah, I'll be right there, I'll drive it, come next week, you don't ever see nothing, done. And that's my two cents where I put it down. Thank y'all.
Hi, my name is Emily Truman. The first two comments are, as a dispatcher, after those first two, be citizen as a voter, just to clarify. As a dispatcher, I'd like to say thank you on behalf of those of us that did receive the mileage checks that were promised. And I would also like to say that we are excited to be returning to our home office tomorrow. Tomorrow evening, we will be back in the county, and I just thought that that needed to be mentioned, I didn't know if it was planned later or not. Moving along, the following comments are from me as a citizen. I had a citizen message me and ask me to also present this, so if you would like a copy at the end, I'm happy to get it to you. To the Gates County Commissioners, my name is Nancy Norton-Menter, and my husband and myself are residents of Gates County residing in Gates. I've asked Emily Truman to read this for me, since I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. I would much rather have spoken to you personally, but I'm unable to attend meetings due to the lack of accessibility to the seating area. I walk with a cane and cannot climb stairs or use steps due to degenerative disc disease. We did attend one meeting, and Sheriff Campbell kindly directed us to the elevator in the rear of the building. That was fine, except to get to the seats, I had to turn sideways between the table and the sound equipment. I do not walk very well sideways and have enough trouble standing up straight. My husband is having back surgery on March 3rd and also will not be able to attend. With my other health issues, I am unable to sit through the entire meeting. Last time, we had to leave early, and rather than disrupting the meeting to squeeze back through, we used the stairs, and I was unable to walk for several days. I did not want to have to end up in Ray Freeman's lap, although he may have liked it, but then he would have had to get up and help me, causing a, causing more disruption. I am sure that I am not the only person in Gates County that uses a cane, walker, or crutches. A wheelchair would never be able to get through. I am asking that better arrangements be made for the elderly and persons with disabilities. I would attend every meeting and get more involved in the community if the facilities were more accessible. I hope you will give this some consideration. I would also like to say that both my husband and myself wish to vote no on the, on the purchase of the proposed land without further information to the residents. We have many more issues that need to be resolved before spending that amount of money. Thank you for allowing Emily to present my concerns, Nancy Norton-Menter. And then moving on to this. Apologize, I have lots of stuff here. The meeting time. I understand this keeps coming up, but while browsing and printing the minutes for the past couple of years, I came across a resolution that is actually on our county website, and the resolution was passed to hold the meetings at 6:30 PM in March of 2020. I have to ask, was this resolution formally dissolved, or was the change in meeting time made without respect to the democracy we live in, which could have given the commissioners the opportunity to vote after receiving citizen comments on the matter? I have copies should you need them, but it's also on the county website. $33,000, $36,000, $36,000, $34,500, $33,000, $34,500, $35,360. Those are the current salaries of our unranked sheriff deputies as of December 17th, per the information I received from the county. I want to know why a new dispatcher, multiple actually, are reportedly coming in with a promised salary of $34,000 a year, in addition to promises of raises every six months, exclusive days, and a supervisor position when some of our deputies aren't even making $34,000 a year, or are just over that. And at least one sergeant and one lieutenant haven't received their merit raises as promised for the past several years. Prolonging from communication with other counties, on to another subject, that the citizens have a right to see the commissioner packets, I would like to request that they be added to the county website for accessibility prior to the meetings each month. This may in fact save you some of these comments, as we will have some of the information that may prevent us from needing to stand up here and ask questions that we could research for ourselves. Contradictions. In December, we were looking at consolidating 911 centers with other counties. In January, we were told it was off the table. Per the newspaper article, we need to look into it. Forgive me while I recover from the whiplash of it all, it's exhausting. Speaking of the newspaper, I'd like to address this, but honestly, I don't know where to begin, and there certainly is not enough time. I also was notified that you guys have been given a list of questions from Mr. Nani Minge, who was unable to get here in time to speak tonight. I certainly hope that you will address those issues. And lastly, I want to thank you for awarding me the opportunity to say what I had to say tonight, without getting frazzled from an unnecessary interruption. Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Good evening, Patrick Martin, representing Gatesville. Few things came to mind from the last meeting I'd like to address. First off, the very first thing we should look at is, what month is it's Black History Month? We should be recognizing Black History Month when we start this meeting. It's nice to learn that there's some history out there that we're just now learning, has been hidden for many, many years, that's now coming to light. So I want to say that first and foremost. When we moved to this county, such as Mr. Riddick touched on earlier, if I get that name right, is that we need to come together as a community, and I think we've done a pretty good job of it. When we first moved here, I was impressed and taken aback by how many people from different parts of the county and different races got together really well, particularly going to elementary school, high school, friends that my kids carried around with, was excellent, the politeness of the, of the youth in this county, and just the way the county comes together, with example of what happened to Michael Brooks. Breaks his neck, he's paralyzed, the community came together as a whole, and you just don't find that in the city, see where I came from. The other thing I want to address is some confusion from the last meeting, when it was stated that the members of the board do not look at Facebook. An hour into the meeting, it was said, we do not look at Facebook or do not go by that or anything like that, because a lot of misinformation. Hour later, while the emergency manager was up here, it was said by the same person that says they don't read Facebook, oh, I've seen the messages on Facebook, I've seen the comments. So either you do or you don't. Credibility is going out the window when you say you don't, and then you do. The other thing about credibility, an example of septic systems, apparently it's misunderstood by this board that everybody's opposed to the land deal because of its perkness. That is incorrect, that's further from the truth. If you know anything about drain fields and septic systems, it was brought to our attention that, look at what they do at the beach, that's great septic system that they got, you know, you got to stay to the yard stuff, when in fact sandy soils is the best soil to have for septic systems. So again, that comparison is irrelevant. The worst land you can have is clay. That is what that 145 acres next to the credit union that y'all are trying to buy is full of. You ask everybody that's been in this county for years, that's great, it's, we need growth, there's no doubt about that, and I don't think people up here arguing about not having growth. What they're arguing about is buying a piece of junk land for the amount of money y'all are spending on it. It just does not equal value at all. So to call us misinformed is, is quite upsetting to me, because I've done research, I've called people, just like our water system. If you open up a hydrant in Gatesville, everybody loses water pressure. Why? Because it's only one feet into the, into that area. I've talked to somebody in the water department, and they said, I have a solution for that, that's to loop the system, so there's not just one direction the water's coming in, and your water won't drop. From my understanding from talking to the local historians, which are our elderly, our seniors, who we really need to take care of, because they are the reason we're here. Because for what they've done to get us here today, we need to look after them, and that senior citizen, that senior place at the community center is an excellent start. And thank goodness for the state coming up with some money for that. Also, think that body cameras is a great idea, because then you'll be able to see how the deputies will have trouble communicating on their radios. And from my, my knowledge is, radios have been requested and it's still not been purchased. So somebody please tell me if that is true or not. And I also agree with the gentleman right there that said something about, who is somebody coming here less than a year to decide what's good and what's bad for the county? Go onto the paper and talk about how there's miscommunication and miscommunication, well, the miscommunication starts right here, in what you present us. There's never been any, any proposal on boards or anything to say, this is what we plan to do with this land, this is what we got, developer, blah, blah, blah. We don't have any of that stuff. Fire departments, you know, one of the things in the meeting last month, first thing this board thinks about is public safety. Is that true, really? Has the, have you given more to the departments, the fire departments, the volunteers? They're having to build their own stations, they're having to fix their own equipment. You know, that's, that should be money that should be helped by you, the board, help these departments find out what they need, you know, do you have a project that's being held up? You know, and I, just like Erna Bright said, I went back and viewed that entire meeting, and nowhere did I see anybody say anything derogatory about proquemis. And yet, it was written in the paper that somebody was appalled at the fact that they were knocking Proquemis County for what they did. Somebody with experience like myself knows, and anybody that's an emergency responder from the dispatcher all the way down, you have to expect the unexpected, because that's what we deal with. You think if I do this, that will take care of that? Oh, oh, that's just happened over here. We got to think ahead of what could happen by doing this. So that being said, I hope that you, the commissioners, will take problems that came up before y'all got on the board, fix the problems that are here now, support your public safety, mend the divide that you have with the sheriff's office. And I'm going to tell you what, the sheriff's office, I deal with them every now and then, and they're great. So that's all I got to say. I'll be back next month.
Out last, it's Mr. Timothy Williams.
Good evening. I did some research on two issues that I had, and I found out that the commissioners are the one to correct this. And my issues are that I'm on a board of adjustments, and that meeting is at 1 o'clock during the day, when we have a meeting. Further that, when I look at the planning board, that meeting is at 3 o'clock, okay? And what came to my mind was that the accessibility to people that's working. If I didn't have annual leave, the $50 they paying me to come here for four hours of leave doesn't add up. Everybody can't, can't do that. So could we possibly, because I'm understanding that the commissioners change time on them two committees, the planning board and the board of adjustments. Could we change the times in the evenings, 5:30, possibly 6:00, so that if a person wants to attend or be on that aboard, that they can do that as well? If you think about to, to come to our board to come to with an issue, there's a fee for that. So also with that, you pay a fee, then you got to take time off from work. So it's like a penalty for coming up with an issue, if you understand what I'm saying. So could we collectively... So could we collectively, as a board, think about that? When you're looking at a person coming out at 1:00 in the day and at 3:00, okay? So that you make them boards meetings in the afternoon, 5:30, 6:00, whatever, what have you, and people can attend if they like. I also hear that, and it's not an excuse, not a good enough one for me, that no matter if you change it to 5:30 or 6:00, they're not coming, that doesn't matter, you made it accessible. Because I hear through the board, because y'all heard me before when I came from other issues, we want to provide transparency. So to provide transparency, you gotta make it accessible. That's it from me tonight. Thank you very much.
Do we have anybody else?
He's the last speaker.
I'm gonna ask Mr. Carey to come and turn the monitor so that we can see that we have a PowerPoint presentation by our next presenter. The mics are still on, he's just gonna come and make that visible. Our next presenter's going to be Ms. Teresa Beersley, Tobacco Prevention Manager for Region Nine, Abama Regional Health Services, and Shayla Hayes, Gates Partners for Health Coordinator, Abama Regional Health Services. And commissioners, I believe you have a copy of their presentation at your seats. And as soon as...
I also have this to give you all, if that's okay.
You may hand it to the clerk, she can give it to us. So Mr. Carey let us know that he's ready. We have a copy at our seat.
Good evening, Madam Chair Riddick, Madam Vice Chair Hoffler, members of the board, and others in attendance. My name is Shayla Hayes. I am a Public Health Education Specialist with Abama Regional Health Services, and the coordinator for Gates Partners for Health, and I'm standing here with my colleague Teresa Beersley. Teresa is the Region Nine Tobacco Prevention and Control Coordinator for our region. And today, we want to present to you some information related to tobacco awareness, the authority to regulate, and our recommendations for strengthening the county's current policy. So I'm going to begin this presentation by briefly discussing evidence of how tobacco use impacts health outcomes, and how some groups of people are impacted by tobacco use more than others. Tobacco use is linked to the cause of many health disparities. For those of you unfamiliar, health disparities is just a fancy term for when some groups are impacted by a health issue at higher rates than others. We identify health disparities by interpreting health data that is collected from different groups of people. So you'll see on the screen, this is an example of how we collect data to determine where health disparities exist, and this example here is regarding a tobacco-related disparity. So North Carolina collects data on individuals who are uninsured and those who receive Medicaid. And when looking at that data, they look to see who's utilizing more intensive mental health services, as well as substance use disorder treatment services, excuse me. When looking at that data, we notice that 68% of people who use substance use disorder treatment services also use tobacco. In comparison, 56% of people using mental health services use tobacco. Next slide, please. This graphic here just shows additional health disparities. Although cigarette smoking has declined significantly throughout the years, disparities in tobacco use remain across groups defined by race, ethnicity, educational attainment levels, socioeconomic status, and across different regions within our nation. There are still certain groups within our community that are still smoking at higher rates, and this is what we call health disparity. Next slide, please. So next, I'll give you a brief overview at how evidence and findings of the health impacts from smoking have developed over time. So in 1964, Dr. Luther Terry shot the nation when he released the very first report of the Surgeon General's Advisory Committee on Smoking and Health. This report shares studies and evidence that link smoking to lung cancer and heart disease. The release of the report was the first in a series of steps that are still being taken more than 40 years later to reduce the burden that tobacco use has on the health of individuals. Next slide, please. In 2006, the Surgeon General released the health consequences of involuntary exposure to tobacco smoke. This report revealed that there is no safe level of secondhand smoke exposure. Secondhand smoke exposure is defined as the combination of smoke from the burning end of a cigarette and the chemicals breathed out by smokers. The same applies to e-cigarette use as well. Secondhand smoke contains more than 7,000 chemicals, hundreds which are toxic, and about 70 of those chemicals cause cancer. Since the 1964 Surgeon General's report, 2.5 million adults who are non-smokers have died because they breathe secondhand smoke. Next slide, please. This visual here just reiterates that there is no safe level, excuse me, of secondhand smoke. In fact, in just five minutes, just five minutes of secondhand smoke exposure can hurt an individual, increasing their risk for asthma or heart attacks. Next slide, please. Secondhand smoke impacts do not discriminate, they impact everyone. This visual here talks about how they impact individuals related to their coronary heart disease risk, lung irritation, and cancer, strokes, as well as nasal irritation. Other vulnerable populations such as pregnant women, children, and infants are severely impacted by secondhand smoke exposure. Next slide, please. In 2014, the Surgeon General released the health consequences of smoking, 50 years of progress. While much progress has been made, this report revealed that smoking damages nearly every part of the body. It also commemorated the anniversary of the very first report that laid the foundation for today's programs to reduce the disease and death caused by smoking. Next slide, please. This graphic here just shows all of the health effects that smoking, secondhand smoke exposure, and other forms of tobacco use have on an individual's body. Next slide, please. One of our most vulnerable populations being impacted by tobacco use are our youth. More than 90% of tobacco users start before the age of 18. The 2016 Surgeon General report found that e-cigarette aerosol is not merely just water vapor, it is, in fact, harmless. Most e-cigarettes... Most e-cigarettes contain nicotine, can harm brain development, can impact learning, memory, and attention, and can increase risk for future addiction to other drugs. We know from previous research that nine in 10 adults who smoke first, who smoke, first try conventional cigarettes during adolescence, and this could extend to e-cigarette use as well. This graphic here just shows that e-cigarettes, e-cigarettes, excuse me, have been the number one product used by youth since 2015. Next slide. In fact, e-cigarette use continues to increase among youth. Although overall tobacco use has decreased from 38.3% of high school students in 1999 to 27.3% of high school students in 2019, which is the latest data, e-cigarette use increased 24% since 2017. Next slide, please. E-cigarettes are not only used for the consumption of tobacco, they can also be used as delivery systems for cannabinoids and potentially other illicit drugs. Approximately 1/3 of students who have ever used an e-cigarette reported having used at least once an e-cigarette for a substance other than nicotine. So to conclude my portion of the presentation, my take-home message is that tobacco use is the leading cause of preventable cause of death in North Carolina. Again, it is the leading cause of preventable cause of death in North Carolina.
Next slide. This slide is just a little bit of information about facts on smoking, tobacco use, and COVID-19. Cigarette smoking increases your risk of severe illness from COVID-19. It reduces the lung immunity and causes underlying conditions that increase the risk for severe illness. Next slide. All right, so here we talk about money. Tobacco use costs everyone. Tobacco use increases employee absenteeism along with healthcare costs. So if you look at this graphic, you can see the cost per smoker in excess healthcare, in healthcare alone for North Carolina, $3.8 billion, and per household, $888. Next slide. And then the burden of tobacco use in North Carolina. There's one in five deaths in North Carolina due to tobacco use, and for every death, there are 30 more people that are sick or disabled. Smoking costs North Carolina $3.81 billion per year in healthcare costs, including $931 million in Medicaid costs. Next slide. So where are we going with this? Quitting is very difficult. It takes the average person five to seven attempts to quit and be successful. 60% of all smokers want to quit and attempt to quit each year, but they don't utilize evidence-based approaches. Next slide. The barriers that are existing for people that want to quit smoking. Tobacco is easily accessible, smoking is in public, and inherent in Gates County on government grounds is legal, and the advertising that is out there, along with poor access to cessation. Next slide. Here we are with the tobacco control vaccine, 100% of tobacco-free policies, price increases in preventing access to tobacco products, so your T-21 law, hard-hitting media campaigns, and easy access to effective tobacco treatment. That is what works for, evidence-based of what works for tobacco control. Next slide. The Community Preventive Service Task Force recommends smoke-free policies. They reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, they reduce the prevalence of tobacco use, increase the number of tobacco users who quit successfully, reduce the initiation of tobacco use among our youth, they reduce tobacco-related morbidity and mortality, including cardiovascular events, and reduce healthcare costs substantially. Next slide. The next group of slides, I'm not gonna read over each one for you, but the next group of slides are what the local government has authority to regulate. So here, the local government does have the authority to regulate smoking and tobacco use on government buildings, grounds, vehicles, and public places. Next slide. And this just defines what government buildings are, your health departments, courthouses, county libraries. Next slide. Government vehicles being your public transportation. Next slide. Government grounds, so any ground outside of your government buildings. Next slide. Your public places, meaning inside your public places, grocery stores, bowling alleys. Next slide. And then this is just a brief update on the definition of a tobacco product. The definition has been recently updated at the state level to include synthetic nicotine, since synthetic nicotine is a big concern now. Next slide. This is where North Carolina is. You've got your counties and municipalities reporting 100% smoke-free or tobacco-free on this slide for government buildings. Next slide. And this is our region right here. So you can see the strongest policies in our region currently are Curris Hough in Northampton. They include government vehicles, buildings, grounds, parks, and recreation areas. If you look at Gates, Gates is almost there. Gates has smoke-free parks and recreation areas, and does not have any policy for government grounds. Next slide. So again, what is left unchecked here in Gates County, your tobacco-free government grounds, government-owned parks, and recreation areas. Next slide. All right, one of the biggest questions we get is about compliance. Compliance is about education and shifting that cultural norm. It's not about someone being out there to man people smoking in areas where they're not supposed to. So communication, signage, and cessation, which are all things that we with the health department would assist with. Next. And what will we do? Any change in your policy to strengthen it will not cost Gates County any money. We'll provide all the signage, we'll provide all the cessation materials and information, we'll provide all the education, doormats for your government buildings, basically anything that Gates County would need to assist with the process. And we'll write the policy from NCDHHS. That's what. These are our state contacts, so we work at the local level, but we also work with NCDHHS, so these are our state contacts, if you need further information from them. Thank you so much. Any questions?
If I have any questions. Very informative.
Yeah, it certainly is. What do you recommend?
We recommend for Gates County to adopt a policy that includes tobacco-free government grounds. That'll reduce that secondhand smoke exposure and also increase the assistance for people being able to quit. When someone is around someone else that is smoking or walks out and sees it, it's a trigger for someone that's trying to quit. So we would definitely advocate for that, and we would recommend the policy to include tobacco use in general on your parks and recreation areas, as opposed to just smoking.
Any other questions or comments?
And I think you do have an infographic that will, that would, right there, yes ma'am, that'll help give you a little bit of more information on the reason, just kind of the reason why to move in that direction.
Thank you. We'll take that under consideration.
Thank y'all for your time.
Before we move on, we need to adjust the screen again, so we're gonna take a five-minute stretch break, restroom break, before we call up our other guest, Mr. Michael Irving, Executive Director of Abama Commission. Let's take a five-minute recess.
It was not adequate for us to get it done. There's some paperwork we just could not find. We didn't have the capacity to do it. We needed an agent to help us with repairs. Instead of just saying, okay, that's it. I reached out to Alba Marl Commission, Mr. Irving. We had a conversation two or three times starting last week because I watched the clock tick. We knew we had to do something and doing nothing was not an option. We know we have citizens, many of them disabled, senior citizens in this county, that have urgent repairs, small repairs, not anything magnificent, but they just didn't have the funds to do it. And in the past, we have these grants. We already under one of them right now, I think it's 2019 or 2018, is still open. And he will speak to that. But when I saw that and had conversations with the proposed grant writer, instead of saying, okay, let's just forget it, I called Alba Marl Commission and talked to Mr. Irving. And we had multiple conversations. He acted as our, he's our council of government, Alba Marl Commission, serves 10 counties. So I called him, we had conversation. He said, of course, we'll help you. And we appreciate that. And he's going to explain how he's going to help us and what options we have commissioners that we can choose. I've already talked to him about each one of these options. And he's going to explain that, what he, his agency, Alba Marl Commission, can do to help us so that we can apply. That doesn't mean that we're going to get the grant. But if we don't apply, we're not going to get the funding. So what we're trying to do as the board is to ensure that we have some funding in this county going forward that can help those that qualify to repair their homes. So I'm going to ask Mr. Irving and Sharon Smith to come to the podium. And he's going to share with us, commissioners and the public, what he has discovered, what he can do. It's up to us what option we choose, but doing nothing was not an option.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Person Riddick, Commissioners, Mr. Wilson, our manager, and Mr. Godwin, our county attorney for this illustrious county of Gates, one of our 10 counties that we serve as the Alba Marl Commission. As you do know, we serve you. We serve you in any role that is very possible for us to do so. Grant writing is one of the major undertakings that we've taken in the last two years. This particular grant spins out of the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency. You currently have had dealings with them through another agency as far as central single-family loan pool. This comes out of the very same agency, but we are stepping in and acting as the manager of this program, not a third party. It would be the Alba Marl Commission that would be acting on your behalf. There are several things that are involved in this. Obviously, we would manage the criteria. We would make sure that the individuals that apply qualify. And we did this little flyer this afternoon. Sharon is so good at doing the last-minute thing so that we would address really specifically Gates County, even though a lot of this data applies to any county that we would present this to. It applies to roughly $12,000 per house as a max. So it is only an emergency repair program. It's not a major restoration. It's repair. And just think of it today, if you go to get a roof put on a house, it could be $5,000 real easy. So $12,000 doesn't go far, but $12,000 could really be a great assistance to any one particular family. They have to qualify to be 62 years or older. They have to, or could be a veteran, or could be a single parent, handicapped or disability individual, or a household that has at least five or more people in it. So there are various criterias that allow us to make sure that individuals qualify for this grant. They also have to have an income that is 50% of the Gates County median income. Now, we put 64.3 as the median income, but there is some adjustments on that as well. For example, it depends on how many people in the family. So if there's eight people, you don't have to meet half of 64,000. It could be even less. So we would manage all of that. We would manage the actual construction. We would have crews that we have already, you may have even noticed in the papers, that we've been advertising for crews to sign up with us to do the work. We already have approximately 10 or 12 construction companies. And you don't have to, because of the dollar amount, you don't have to be a licensed contractor. We hope somebody is on board that is a licensed contractor, but they don't have to be because it can be things like building a rail on the stair steps for safety. It could be ramps. And therefore, we have, in a lot of counties, already some of the adult church groups that work with that area already signed up with us. You know, like Eden and Baptist Church, for example, has signed up. We've got a bunch of people that will come in and work. And we're looking for at least one dedicated construction-type group out of each county, but we're making sure that we've got several in tangent counties like Perk Women's County that's willing to come into Gates County. So we're managing all that. So it takes a lot of burden off of you. Now, doing that, there are three criteria or three programs that is offered through the North Carolina Housing Agency. And it's not per se different criteria, but it's a massaging of what's available. And so I've got to tell you what those massage options are because you'll have to make that decision if you would like for us to represent you on this. The first one is you can apply as a county on your own. And if you do that, you get a max, you could qualify for a max of $132,000. And again, that's 12,000 per home. So that tells you how many homes you could do at $12,000 each. If you apply on your own, then the money comes to you and then we bill you for the work that gets done. So your big element is just accept the money when it comes in. We would help you apply. It would be in your name, but then you would pay Alba Marl Commission as the manager of the project. So that's number one option. Number two option is that you can join with another county. You could join with, well, I'm telling you, Perk Women's County wants to go a different route. So let's say you could join with Chauan County. The problem with joining with them, again, limits the amount of money any one county could get. They still have a max that can be gotten, which a max would be 132,000 per county. The only advantage in joining with another county is if they're willing to take on the management rather than Alba Marl Commission because I'm assuming Gates County is not real excited about managing their own programs, which most counties, as we all know, currently don't have enough capacity to manage maybe what they've got. So it can be really convoluted in trying to manage a new program that you're not used to on a daily basis. We've got experience in doing these programs, so we know the direction to head in. So joining with another county, you could still potentially get the same amount of money, but then you've got another hand in the pot or another management, which may not be bad. I'm not saying it is. I'm not saying it isn't. That's just another option that you've got at hand. You could join with another county. And then the third option is the option that we had already looked at and we were going to do if no county said, wait a minute, we would like for you to manage our county. That is, we can put an application in, in the name of the Alba Marl Commission, for all 10 counties. The problem is the max that we can get out of that is $264,000, which means $26,000 per county is the most that could go. Now, there could be counties that say, I don't want the money, and that gives more money to be shifted to the counties that do want it. But that is the third option. So that we still have options, and I can assure you that we are applying for the 264 at very worst. So you will be in that pot if you don't select one of the other two options. We know, because I've spent a lot of time on the phone with Chuck Doppler and Gloria Moore at the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency, that it's a doable thing for these counties. Our counties are some of the counties that are in the most need, and they are saying they will definitely give the money. Hyde in the 2020 U R P was one of the only counties that applied in our 10 regions individually, and they got all the money, and they've been a success story. So they are going to apply again by themselves without any need because they've already got somebody that's doing the program and it's working successfully. So I present that to you with the hopes that you'll make a decision that's best for your county, knowing that regardless of your decision, we will be applying in the name of Alba Marl Commission. So you will qualify for at least $26,000 no matter which route you go. But I'm hoping you see fit to dig for a little bit more money because this county could use a little bit more money. Do you have any questions?
I think that the public should know, one of our problems is finding people who will do the work.
Correct.
And you have that already.
Correct.
In line. So that is an important plus.
We're working on that. I'm sorry to interrupt you. We would ask for you, if you have any suggestions, anybody you want us to vet for participation on that, we're calling it the approved contractors list. So if you do have some suggestions for us, we'll call them and see if we can get them on board. But we're all having the same problem.
And keep in mind, like I said, they do not have to be general contractors. This falls below that threshold. So we've worked out the management details to have a oversight for those individuals that do not have general contractor's license. So if it's just someone, for example, we're trying to work right this minute with C O A on a very specific type program that would give us trainees that could go out in the field and do things like replace siding that has fell off, you know, simple tasks. So we're really spending a lot of time and effort on trying to build a program that will have some longevity as well.
Just to say, I mean, I know because of the dollar amount, they may not have to be a general contractor, but if it's regulated by the code, it does have to be constructed to code.
Well, but we've got that detail worked out. We've got a manager that will oversee that.
Okay.
And I believe that the form I was looking at today, it requires a signature by the local code enforcement person. So whatever your particular procedure is for that in Gates County, the Alba Marl Commission staff member would have to incorporate him or her in the process.
So let me ask a math question. So option two and option three would guarantee $132,000. It says, of course, you're doing the $12,000 each home. Suppose it was a scenario where a house only needed, say, four houses, only needed $5,000 worth of work. Can we use the pot of money and go beyond?
You cannot go beyond $12,000 on any house without specific approval. There are some exceptions where they will approve it, just like a central single-family loan pool. They will go above and beyond the max amount in certain situations. The same will apply on this 12,000, but what they would rather you do, let's say you use five on one house, they'd rather you take that other seven and go find another house that you could do that seven with.
Okay. So within the program, if, example you gave, fives needed here, we're using a pool of money. If we can help 22 people with that pool of money, we can do that.
Absolutely. If you had 132 people that could use only $1,000 a piece, then you could do 132 houses, which is realistic, but nevertheless.
And for, just for the public's information, on option two and three, it says the funding must be awarded to the county.
That's correct. The other one is awarded to the Alba Marl Commission if we go that route. And it may be that. I will be honest with you. Here's the way that we would like to see it done. We would like to see every county that's willing to put the grant in in their name and let us do their management for them, do so. And then let's say there's only three counties that's left that says we don't want to do it. Then we, as the Alba Marl Commission, could apply for those three counties as a bundle sum. Now, it may only limit it to 132,000 that has to be split between the three, but then it flows to us to do the management. And under those terms, unfortunately, we put their names in, but I may have one county that most of the money goes to, it's whoever who has the most need when we do that.
And I think I understood that you would actually help us with a submission if we chose option two.
Correct.
To go it alone, you would do our application process for us.
That is correct.
And we can help you with option three also.
Yeah, either one.
If you join with another county. We can help you either way.
And the timeline again?
28.
February 28th. This is the 16th.
Well, here's the business. We've done a lot of the preliminary work. There's still some work that we require from each county, but I wouldn't say we, Sharon is doing the preliminary work.
Would you need our, by the 28th, would you need the particular properties that we had in mind? You wouldn't need that. Okay, that's good.
But we have had the application in to Raleigh.
Raleigh, that's correct.
So a little background on that. The reason we're on such a short timeframe is we were just plugging along thinking, oh, well, we'll just apply as the commission and get the 264 and do what we can. But then, as we started looking at it more closely and filling out the application, we thought, wait a minute, there's a chance for each county to get 132 instead of 26. So then we thought we just, we needed to run it past y'all to see if it was something you were interested in on your own.
And we had to run it past North Carolina Housing Finance because typically, they would say, if you're applying, Alba Marl Commission, then we can't apply for you. And that's the truth. But you can apply for you, and we can manage it for you. There's no tax to that. So we, you know, it's playing the state rules and how they function to get the most for our counties.
And we certainly have plenty of need here.
Yes.
So.
The way I see it, and I realize we're seeing it here pretty quick, you know, if we were going to partner with somebody, how many days? 13 days? If we're going to partner with somebody, that board certainly couldn't make a decision without that board meeting and making the decision. So with that 13-day window, it sounds like to me that option two is the safest way for us to go. We get the same amount of money, and they're managing the program, and they're putting our application together with information that they request from us. So.
Just need your signature.
And in terms of the management cost or what I call the administration of the grant, if we're successful, where do those funds come from? Are those a percentage of the grant or, you know, the 12,000 per home, is it a, would a percentage of that pay for the administration?
It does. You can, it's a little bit of a convoluted formula, but the max administrative fees that can come out of any one loan is $1,000. Now, part of that typically, a good chunk of that goes to the attorney that has to do the closing on the deed of trust. Now, this is a forgivable grant. Every year, as long as the house is maintained in the name of the grantee, then $3,000 is forgiven. So after four years, this is a free gift to the owners of the home.
Yeah. I was just curious as to, you know, because I know grant administration does cost money. And, you know, is the 12,000, would that truly be 12,000 that goes into the home? Or is a portion of that 12,000 going towards the administration?
Part of it, up to $1,000 goes into administration. Keep in mind that probably as much as 300 and some will go to an attorney unless we can get pro bono from attorneys to do closing. On occasion, we've lucked out and done that, but that's not to say right this minute that they're not so busy. They say, we need our 300 and some dollars in closing costs. So as you see right there, there's almost 40% of the $1,000. So we do have to build that in. We don't have an option. Now, we can forego any of our administrative fees other than, you know, if we have to do copies that have to be mailed off and all, we will keep up with those, but we do not charge any on top. In other words, if it's five cents a copy, that's what we charge, five cents a copy. So the administrative cost will be minimal with the attorney fees probably being the largest.
Yeah, just for, you know, it's not unusual at all for a percentage of grant funds to be applied to administrative fees. I just wanted to know if you had already factored that in or if that was coming out of the 12.
No, it's in the 12. But we, in the build-in, we max it out at $1,000, and hopefully, we don't use all of that, which gives just more money towards the house, to the homeowner.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Irving and Ms. Smith?
Very good.
So now, we're going to have to choose because we got 12 days. So you can't table it and go to.
Madam Chairman, I will say as attorney here, my law partner and I would be glad to do these pro bono for citizens.
So there's 3, 400.
Well, I think this is a no-brainer.
Yeah, number two seems the only option.
Number two. And I would like to make that as a motion that we go ahead and vote on that.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion to select option number two. And a second, are we ready to vote?
Ready.
All approved?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Irving.
Thank you all very much for your time. And don't forget, call us if you need us.
Thank you. Administrative reports. This is a tax report.
Good evening. Hope y'all are doing well this evening. You should have your tax collector's report in your packet from January of '22. We had another good month on the collection side. We collected $1,072,878 in the month of January. Almost 69,000 of that were D and B funds. 15,000 came from Zikeas. Looking at the collection rate, we're almost right where we were, a little bit above where we were last year, almost to 92%. Second notices went out yesterday. So if you received your bill in July, you had till January to pay it, we're telling you, you got till the 15th of March, or you're going to go into the Gates County index. That usually generates a little bit of buzz in the office. So that should help out with collections for this month and next month. Pioneer Appraisals will be here the first week of March. He and I will go out and appraise all of the new construction in the county. Other than that, anybody have any questions for me?
Any questions or comments?
Does anybody know that the year of the next revow?
It should be 2024.
2024?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good job.
Finance report. I see the finance director here, and if anybody else is here to speak to their department reports, I'll leave that up to the county manager. Good afternoon, Ms. Alton.
Good evening, everyone. Only had a few updates for you guys this evening. The first in the report in the packet was the sales tax revenue. Good news, this was the second highest month in collection for this fiscal year, so we're still in good shape with where we are projecting excess funds coming in over what we budgeted in sales tax revenue. A quick update on our audit. It was submitted in January. It was late due to COVID illnesses that put the audit team behind. But that has been submitted. Everything has been turned in to the L G C. And Tim Lyons, the team lead of our audit team, should be on the agenda for next month to do the presentation for the board on the audit for fiscal year '21. We have met with all of the department heads for the fiscal year '23 budget request. Those have been turned in, so we're in the process of just starting to compile all that information together. So that was just a little brief update on where we are with the budget for next year. And the item that I was supposed to present at the last meeting that I wasn't here for was the new bank draft option that we are going to give for our WARE customers if they would like to do auto draft. This will be no charge for the customer. This will draft on the due date of the bill. We have an authorization form that the customer would need to fill out if they would like to select this option. That'll be placed on our website tomorrow. Also, a hard copy will be in the customer service department if a customer comes in and wants to fill out that form in the building. We will need a voided check with that authorization form. If a customer does not have, some folks have checking accounts, but they may not have physical checks, they can contact the bank, and the bank should be able to give them a written statement or verification that they can turn in. We do need that information. That way, it prevents any misreading of handwriting if somebody was just to write their account in so that we have that correct information. This process, in order to upload the bank draft, we will have an opportunity to do a high-level review of that before we go and just draft it out of someone's account. And when I say high level, the report will be able to be run out of the accounting software. And just a quick glance, if you see someone who typically has a $12 water bill and this month is 1,800, you can extract that out of the report. So you can contact the customer so we're not drafting them $1,800 if they had a leak or something. But again, that is a very high-level review, and it is still the customer's responsibility to review their bill when they get their bill. But we do have that option. The tentative effective date will be for the April 16 bill. So if someone is on that cycle and they have a bill that's due April 16, and they have chosen this option, we should be able to run that auto draft for them. Again, this is not a requirement, it's just another option for the customer for auto draft. And that was, any questions? That was all I had tonight.
Any question for Ms. Alton? Okay, thank you, Kim. Next, we will have the emergency management report, E 911, and radio. Mr. Sample.
Good evening, everybody. Just to give you a quick update, let's see, when it comes to the radios for the county, I'm in the process of getting one quote reworked. Once I get that information, I will give it to you. And because it's going to be a very substantial amount of money to cover portable radios and mobile units for all the fire apparatus, all the sheriff's department vehicles, emergency management, EMS, it's going to be quite a bundle. I can see that already. I will give that to you, and it'll be up to the commissioners and county manager and the finance to figure out where those funds will be coming from. But just to let you know, it is going to be a pretty large amount. When it comes to the 911 center itself, it has been brought to the attention earlier this evening, but we will be moving back to Gates County 911 tomorrow between the hours of 10 and 2 o'clock. The CAD server, we did get that updated. We have a new CAD server in there, and the operating software was updated much recently. So we have what we need to come back to Gates County. I know last meeting, I told you all it would be March 1st, but we've got the minimum amount of equipment that we need right now to get back in there, so we will be back over tomorrow. We've got all the equipment that we can get as of right now, just as electronics are on, you know, on hold, you know, on hold pretty much for all across the country now, getting stuff in. We are reworking some quotes, so like, we'll get a quote from, say, Motorola, they, we have to send it to the state. The state goes through it, tells us what can be financed, what cannot be financed. And once we get those numbers, we'll come back and give it, present to y'all so we can see what the county has to come out of pocket for, for those. But the object is to get all new equipment. You know, like I told you last month, everything needs to be updated. So as we get quotes in, they're being sent to the PSAT, to the state. They're coming back, letting us know what we need to spend and what they're gonna pay for, and we're gonna move on forward with that. Again, we will be back tomorrow between 10 and 2 o'clock. That's the transition time. So we're gonna have a dispatcher over, a Gates dispatcher, and Perquimans dispatching because the server's gonna be down. Any call that comes in will have to be, you know, kind of the old school way, be written on paper. Then when the transition is made, there'll be a dispatcher over here in Gates County. When we move back over permanently, then they'll have to enter it into the system. So that's where we're at with that. And we hired, right now, our staffing is at seven full-time and eight part-time on our roster. And as we get qualified personnel coming in, filling out applications, we're doing interviews. So that's about where we're at right now, 911 and the radios.
Any questions?
Did you hear, cover any shifts when we were in this whole ordeal?
I ended up going over there for a shift, yes. There was a Perquimans dispatcher that would take the calls and basically I was a medic for Perquimans. Since they were providing a service for us and I'm a paramedic, I got on an EMS truck. So I pulled my 16-hour shift over there as a medic for them in case they needed it. But yes, I was in the comm center. I did not, I got on the microphone a couple of times and talked to some first responders, but other than that, they processed the calls and I had my own radio and I would go out and jump on an ambulance if I had to go. I figured they were helping us out, so I was gonna help them out the best I could.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah, some things that talk to emergency management, as the board knows, that all of the equipment, the state had determined it to be past useful life. What was a little bit more disconcerting is that it was also out of maintenance. So we, we did our best to try to make sure that as much equipment as we could possibly purchase and get in that, and our dispatcher, that we did that. And we've come to that point now where, you know, anything we could possibly purchase and get in there, it's, it's there. But while being out of maintenance, you know, we have had discussion with the vendors and if we do have some problems, they're, they're still gonna try to, try to help us out until we can get that, that new equipment in. But like, like Jason said, because of supply chain issues and everything else, it's very difficult to know when some of that equipment may show up.
And during the move tomorrow, there will be no interruption in service. The only thing down is gonna be the CAD server. So anybody calls 911, their call's gonna be answered. The radio, the first responders will be dispatched out, so there will be no effect on that service whatsoever. It's just the CAD system itself.
Have the telecommuter seats been evaluated?
The seats? You mean the chairs?
Yeah, we talked about the chairs.
Yeah, they're being addressed. They still have old chairs in there right now. My recommendation was just go to OfficeMax and grab some chairs for right now because the way the furniture is bought, it's on a, I believe, a five or a 10-year cycle. So we can't get any chairs until 2025, I believe. So it's a 10-year cycle.
I think it's like.
You can't sit in those chairs 24 hours a day, 365.
If, if, if they need chairs to sit in, please come take mine.
Yeah. Yeah, we thought 10 years was, was pretty long.
Would you like to trade off some chairs?
Chair that's being set in 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that's.
That's, that's a lot.
That's a lot.
So, so you're telling, telling us that there's, there's somebody that determines when we can have a new chair, is that, to, to get funded?
To get funded.
To get funded.
To get funded, yes, yes.
Okay.
That's what we said, we're just.
It's all because it's all.
We're just gonna go find a chair.
Well, the, the chairs that would meet, would meet funding would be a high-level, would be a, a good chair?
I mean, my personal opinion, any chair you put in there, it's not gonna last the 10 years like it's supposed to.
Right.
I mean, you got people, you know, sitting in those chairs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, all year round. I mean, you, you couldn't sit in those chairs for 10 years, you know?
I'd be like saying, sitting in a regular office chair, someone doing an eight-hour shift that's supposed to last you 30 years.
So our intent is to go ahead and purchase chairs, good chairs?
Yes.
Okay, and not?
Office chairs.
Yeah, not office chairs, but good chairs. And, and maybe even ask the recommendation of the people who are gonna be sitting in the chairs, you know? And if we had a selection where, you know, what do you, what chair do you think would, would be best for your chair one, two, or three, just like we just went through three options here, to get a little input on that would be beneficial, I think.
Yeah, doesn't have a problem that I can.
Yeah, we're gonna do that real quick.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Super, super. Thanks.
Any, any other comments or questions before we move on?
How, how did our relationship work out with Perquimans?
I, I think it made our relationship a little bit better, honestly. I know our dispatchers are pretty much getting along with them and, you know, it's a good, good communication between the two agencies. I think we definitely built a rapport with them because of the incident, but moving forward, I think we did the right thing.
And they're our backup.
Yeah, they are the backup center now, so.
And we're, we are their backup too, aren't we?
No, 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 they're, they're backup centers in Chilwell.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep, yep.
I was just thinking, be a good neighbor.
If they needed something, we would definitely do what we could for them, obviously. So they, they've definitely helped us out, so we would return the favor as we could.
Absolutely.
How much longer do we have on our M A G or M O A, however you want, I've seen it.
Yeah, both ways.
Both ways. It was just signed.
We did that, yeah, we just, at the last meeting, the board approved the, the backup PSAT with Perquimans.
Okay.
And they had, Perquimans at their meeting, I wanna say, the week after the last meeting here?
Yeah, everything's going back and forth. We've signed ours and sent them to Perquimans, so that's all been done. Getting the signatures on there.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Sample? Thank you, Ms. Sample. I would like to say I thank you and all the dispatchers and, is her name Miss Senior?
Yes, ma'am.
But I also want to mention, we haven't mentioned him, is our IT person, Juan Curry. When I was reading the, the summary of what happened that day, he was at the ready. And he helped get the communication up and running between the firewall and all of that. So sometimes we forget people in the background that we don't know what they do. He says, so they're very quiet. But he helped us with CenturyLink and all that other stuff that he had to, you know, administrative rights and all of that stuff. I don't know what he did, but I saw, I read the report. So I just wanna thank him and, and all the other staff with the hiring. I know that was, you know, the advertising, the hiring, all the staff of the county that helped. And I'm not gonna start, everybody helped. But I wanna put point out, Mr. Curry, 'cause he is very quiet and he just does his work and go home and tell us when the mic's on. So, but I wanted to give a shout out to him because he did help with that quick turnaround that we had to go through with the electronics and the technology.
Oh, he's a wild man, except at the, at the meetings.
Okay. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Are there any more, any more departmental meeting, I mean, meetings, or reports? I don't see any. Move on?
I do, in our packet, we did have one of the fire departments gave, gave us their six-month report. I did not see any from the rest of them. I hope they will send those in.
I think that was Hossville Fire Department?
Yes, it was Hossville. So we are looking for the six-month report from the rest of the fire departments. So, just a friendly reminder.
Okay. Moving right along. Old business. Consideration of contract for land purchase. What's your pleasure?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to go forward with the purchase of the land.
I'll second the motion.
It's, it's been moved and properly seconded that we go into the contract to purchase the land. Instead of having ayes and nays, I'm gonna ask the board clerk, clerk to the board, the poll, the commissioners.
Commissioner Freeman, what is your vote?
Nay.
Hoffler?
Yes.
Dr. Riddick?
Yes.
Commissioner Horns?
Yes.
Commissioner Craddock?
Nay.
What's the outcome?
The outcome is the motion moves is approved.
New business? New business. The 2022 March of Meals proclamation. You see it in your board packet. It is a proclamation from Ms. Laura Rollinson, administrative and volunteer coordinator, Admiral Commission, Senior Nutrition Program. Sent an email requesting that the proclamation be included in the board packet. She also extended an invitation to each commissioner to participate in the delivery of meals during the annual March of Meals Community Championship, Champion Week, March 21st through March 25th, 2022. She also thanked the board in advance for the board's consideration and your assistance in, of signing the proclamation and participating in this year's March of Meals campaign. If you have any questions, please reach out to her. So we need to look at this proclamation. It's for March.
Okay, this is 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program. I make a motion that we endorse that.
Motion on the floor?
Second.
Have a motion and a second to endorse the 50th anniversary of the National Senior Nutrition Program 2022. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Motion carries.
And this is a Meals on Wheels program that she operates that is very, a lot of our citizens are, are receive that and certainly it's a wonderful program.
Next is tourism. That's a presentation from Commissioner Hoffler.
I was assigned to, tried to find about tourism. Last year, six counties in northeastern North Carolina came together and collectively established the African-American experience in northeastern North Carolina. Their vision was to celebrate the contributions of African-Americans and encourage a deep understanding of significance to the region's cultural heritage. This, those six counties were Camden, Chilwell, Curritock, Dare, Passaportite, and Perquimans. They would like for all the counties in the northeast to take a part in that program. Very familiar with the program. Sarah Hill, who's a county resident, is, works in Camden. She is involved with the program. And it has, it's a wonderful program to get started with. This program, they put together a, a trail, a heritage trail that you can go, visit sites across each of the counties that were members. Each county was asked to have at least two sites available, if more, if, if they could. And so they wanted the sites to be a, something that people could visit, that, and be open for, to the public, for, and having someone there for interpretations or whatever. Or it could be a fiscal location that may not be open with regular hours, but has signage, you know, telling about what happened here or what the building was used for and all. And they are very, there's a template that you have to fill out if you recommend sites and it has to be approved by their board, that it is of significance. We have been asked to join. I had approached them and it was too late last year to get in because they have a marketing campaign and they spread out the cause among the six counties. They extended an invitation to us this year to be a part. They want to eventually have all of the 15 counties in the original Avramal land grant from Charles I. And it is, is a, is to drive tourism and to focus on, on northeastern North Carolina. And we have a story to tell. And that's the one, the tragic thing, we don't tell the story. And so it is, this group, they have, they market it, NC, Visit NC is involved with them. They do a marketing campaign, they have brochures so that people can come and take, drive their car and go from place to place to visit. This is, this group received the gold medal for tourism last year that was given by the Trades Association, North Carolina Travel Industry Association, the highest award that gives out each year. And they made the statement that they wanted to see this and to eventually cover all 100 counties. So I would hope that we would take advantage of this. They require, there are some requirements now to appoint two members to, to their board. One should be the tourism director, which we do not have, or a member of the Board of Commissioners. And then someone else as well. It is an active board. They do expect you to attend the meetings. They do expect you to be prepared for the meetings. And, 'cause they have to go over these site catalog templates for each site. And to be, make sure that they are visitor-ready sites. Of course, with everything, there is a cost. And I, in your packet, you saw, there is a $200, $2,000 yearly fee for a website and marketing expense. And you can go up and look at the website when you get home. The board does realize each county is of different circumstances regarding funding and the yearly contribution. So there could be some wiggle room on that, it's county, with some counties. But we have to sign on and enter a yearly contract. You know, as I was thinking, we do have Reed School right here in Gatesville. It does have signage out of, already in front of it, but I think that we could probably work with people and get a display in that room because the Board of Elections is there. That would make that an excellent site to begin with. I have some old ideas of site sites, but we're gonna need some citizen help as well if the board will approve us joining this. I think it is a, the people behind it are very credible. It has been a boost to their tourism in the counties that have had it. People are looking at their heritage and want to go back home and see it. This is a way to do that. I certainly would hope that the board would approve that expenditure. And if you have questions, ask, I might not know the answer, but I will find out.
Are there any questions about the African-American experience of northeastern North Carolina and joining this association? So that we can.
Well, I see on the, on the second page there, where it talks about the trail, it's comprised of 15 counties. And, and of course, you know, they're, they're our neighbors. I would like to see us work, when we're working our budget, to work that $2,000 to be a member, to be a member of this. And I realize, as Ms. Hoffler said, there's some participation that needs to be developed, but we can work toward that. But I, I'd like to see this in our budget consideration.
And that's in form of a motion, Mr. President?
I'll make that in the motion, yes, sir.
And I'll second that motion, Madam Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded.
And as far as I was wondering if Commissioner Hoffler would read out for the sake of all the citizens, all the counties involved?
Okay, the six that started it were Camden, Chilwell, Curritock, Dare, Passaportite, Perquimans. The others are Bertie, Tyrrell, North Hampton, Edgecombe, Hertford, Gates, Washington, Halifax, and Martin. That is all of northeastern North Carolina, which was, you know, that was given to, that was the Avramal. was the Abrahma County Land Grant, given by Charles II.
Okay.
To the Duke of Abrahma. My name's too much history.
Too much.
Madam Chair, I'll call the vote on this.
Call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Madam Chair, I do have an old item. I don't know how many of you paid attention to the budget this year, but Representative Goodwin from Chawan introduced a bill called North Carolina Rural Tourism Recovery Pilot Program, $1.5 million. And Gates is one of the counties listed in there. There were 16 counties listed, and we were one of the 16. The program, once again, is going to be run by Visit North Carolina. They will, it will begin, and we are, it's going to be a trial program and eventually a pilot program, and then it'll probably be, if it works well, go out across the state in future years. But we are at the very beginning. And what will, they will provide funds for marketing and tourism for our area. This would be related to things in our county that would get promoted on their platforms. You know, if you, as you think, you think, well, what can it be? Well, of course, Merchant Mill Pond, we have, but we have some historic items that could be listed. We have activities in the community that could be listed. They asked, did you have anything yearly? Well, we have the rodeo yearly, you know, but it could be any things. We have things that, to emphasize that a tourist might like to do or whatever.
We have plow days.
Yes, and we just have to, but this will require, once again, I mean, this is the money's in our hands, I mean, not in our hands, the money's going to be spent in Raleigh, but they will market Gates County and things in Gates County. But we have to get them, we're going to have to answer some questions for them concerning what we want to emphasize. It could be guests, guest homes where people can stay. It could be the, there's people who have businesses here that, that, you know, could have some advertising or a presentation that on this platform, just a lot of different things. I mean, they will help us generate items.
So what is the action you need from the board?
There's really no option. I guess that, do we have to accept that we'll take part? It's no money on our part. Everything is, they will do. They will use the $1.5 million, and they have to report back to the General Assembly. I think it would look bad if we say no.
Yeah, I, I would, Madam Chair, I make a motion that we participate in this promoting Gates County.
It is, it's promoting Gates County, it could be Studio 3200, or Studio 32, excuse me. It could be, if someone had, you know, just anything that you could think of.
Gates County peanuts.
Gates County peanuts.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is that there's discussion about accepting or promoting?
It's actually a motion.
Yeah, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second that we participate, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That will finish me up for the night.
No, it doesn't, because you're going to have to be great dismal swamp. In your packet, you have a banned North Carolina Senior Tech Progress Report. If you remember last fall, we applied for that grant, was $5,000, and we were successful in getting that grant, but we partnered with the 4H extension. And right now, they're beginning to the second part. The first part, as you will see, the funding was, came from the 4H extension program through A&amp;T or North Carolina State. So you see the update, you see the evaluations, the participation. We are very pleased that Central Middle School, through the superintendent, allowed us to use their technology room. You see the amount of senior citizens that partook up that. We also, in this packet, we are going to start again, probably in March. And I have a meeting tomorrow with the funders, I think it's Zoom meeting, to discuss spending that $5,000 by June. We did not spend the, the grant money because we used somebody else's money. We used the extension because they use their 4Hers, the young people, they enjoy interacting with the senior citizens, and they, they want to do it again. So you have it in your packet, if you have any questions, if you have not read it, if you give me a call, or Kelly Boone across the street, she's the one that facilitates this with the, with the 4Hers, and she's doing a very good job. She will be on the call tomorrow as well. So this is just an update on banned North Carolina. It fulfills our technology requirement that we do digital literacy for senior citizens. This is how we are doing it right now, that's, that's one of the mandates on the state level, I do believe. But I know they pushing digital literacy with technology with our seniors and young people if they so need it, but they have the school system to support them. So that's in your packet, that's just an update. The Great Dismal Swamp, that's in your handout as well, and that's talking about, and we were on, Ms. Hoffler and I was on a Zoom meeting last month about the Great Dismal Swamp. I hope you are familiar with that, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Hoffler to take the lead on that as well, since she's a tourism guru and a historic, historic, historian on the Board of Commissioners.
Historic too, sometimes I feel historic.
Just briefly let them know what we're trying, what they're trying to do with the Great Dismal Swamp, which is a portion, a very small portion in Core Peak, I believe, that flows through there, so can you give that in five minutes or less?
Okay, this is a National Heritage Area Act. It does, first of all, it does not affect private property rights, so don't worry, they're not coming to take land or tell you what you can do with your land. The National Parks Service does not assume ownership of land inside the area or anything like that. And if, what they're asking is just for a feasibility study, to see if this would qualify as a national heritage area, the Dismal Swamp. To be, and it's a, just an exploration for that. And they are, there are several of these areas around the country, and it's just to, because the Dismal Swamp has been an important part of our history in this area. It was a barrier for many years for the, for the Gates County that we would call the lost profits because it was limited transportation. Of course, then in 1880s, it became very valuable property for timber and logging and wildlife, refuge and all, and so they want to try to preserve it. I mean, to, the swamp has shrunk a great deal, but to see what is a feasibility study. But it does affect property rights, it's not, not going to take your land away, it's not going to tell you what you, you know, what you can, can't do.
Okay. Rosenwall School, that's up there as well. We have been trying to get the Rosenwall School photographs, in the Rosenwall School, you know it as the Election Center, or the EIC, it used to be the EIC, and now that's where you go to vote and all of that. There's a room there, and what's going on is Reba Green Hollis is working with Fish University to reproduce or to frame, to frame some of those photographs that we've kept over the years and put them in that school, so that when we have this heritage trail, that's one of the places we can funnel them to. So, and the funds are coming from a leftover appropriation that we had that Reba identified, Reba Green Hollis identified, so it's not costing us anything, it's just that she's getting them framed so that she can put them in the Rosenwall School, as well as contact some of the other historic places in the county, such as the oldest African-American church, contact them for photographs, contact New Middle Swamp for photograph, contact New Hope and others, and get that room up and running so that we can really display our heritage of history with the Rosenwall Schools. So that's why I put it on the update, because I wanted you to understand that this is happening, and also Ms. Hoffler's going to be involved with that. Everything historic, that's Ms. Hoffler. Hate to put it that way, but it's true. So she's the person. So, but she's going to be working with that initiative, and she really does need a committee to help with this, she can't do it all. So I've asked her to check with the clerk to the Board of Institute and how we do that, get a new committee, so that we can have a committee working with her on all these tourism initiatives in this county. We're rich with it, so we need to do that. The monument update, we talked with Davis Monument and they, yesterday, and they let us know that in two weeks, we should have the monument ready. They've asked us to, to flag or where we want to put the monument across the street, and I've also talked to Mr. Lee Brooks, who was the chair of the Monument Committee. I called him and asked him to get the committee back together, because we want them to be a part of what we do as far as the unveiling. It's only right, I mean, they did a lot of work, good work, so we're getting ready to do that, hopefully the weather will cooperate in that, two or three weeks from now, we'll get a call from Davis Monument that it's ready. We approved the inscription, make sure, we made sure that it was, everything was spelled correctly, just like we approved back in, almost in March last year, it's almost been a year, but because of COVID, supply chain, everything just got slowed down. So we're getting ready to move expeditiously, and of course, and Ms. Hoffler's on that too, to make sure that happens, and the county manager will choose the location and the place. Broadband is moving right along, I saw an email last week, they're getting ready to start meetings again. They did a survey to all the ISPs and all the people who are in the census block, I'm almost beginning to understand what I'm saying. But anyway, they sent that out to the potential collaborators, there's a meeting, I think it's next week. Zoom, Mr. Craddock is on that committee to help out, I think he logged into one a couple of weeks ago, I introduced him. I won't tell on you, Mr. Craddock, you can get your camera up.
I cannot get my camera.
They don't, they don't know what he looked like. But he was on, he was on. But anyway, so we're moving right along with that, we'll keep you informed about what's going on with all this broadband money that we're trying to get our hands around to, to help Gates County. And those are all my updates, if you have any questions, I'll try to answer them, or we'll come back to it in an updated email at this time. Oh, finally, I got, I got, I'm not playing with my phone, I got an email, or a text message from Reba Green Hollis, they're going to start the senior games at Gates County Community Center, so be on the lookout for that. The senior games are coming back. I think all of us probably qualify ourselves for Mr. Craddock, but anyway. And I, and I can't make it any larger for some reason, so I don't have the date, but I'm quite sure you'll see it. I will contact Gates County Index, and so they can put it in like an announcement or something, and then about the senior games are coming to Gates County Community Center, I think it's next month, but don't hold me to it. I know you will, but please don't hold me to it, I just can't make it any bigger. I wanted to say something about that.
Also, GEM sits this week again, the drive-through is on Saturday morning. It's very close to our last one, but our last one got postponed because of snow, so we will have, spread the word in your communities and your neighbors that the food giveaway will be Saturday morning, 9:30 to 11:00, I believe. Is that right, Joe? I think that's right.
Okay. All right, now we're finally getting to almost the close of this session. Commissioner and county manager comments if you have any, and then I will ask for a motion to go into closed session. Mr. Freeman?
No comments, actually, certainly, we want everybody to continue to be very aware of the COVID effect and what is going on, we're being told through our, our public health that the, the rate of infection is going down, however, the vaccines are important. We are being told, and maybe you've heard through the media aspect, that we may have to have a booster like every six months, because it is, the variants are, are beginning to take on other activity and, and attach to other viruses that will bring to your system, so be very aware of that. As far as the numbers, they haven't changed that much. However, in Gates County, our numbers, labs that were, were tested, were 1,891 positive with 38, and recovered is 1,613. So good figures, and the number of deaths remain at, at 20 for Gates County.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hoffler?
I'd like to thank everyone for coming. There's a lot of things happening in the county, and a lot of positive things I think are happening in the county, and we've just got to work together, what, to work together with each other, and make, try to make this the best place it can be.
Jack?
Well, I think all the commissioners take notes when the public's speaking, and certainly heard some good things tonight that, that we can look into. And good news, tomorrow, the 911 Center is opening up tomorrow, that's ahead of schedule. And rather than call names, I'll just say, everybody who had their hand in it is greatly appreciated.
Commissioner Craddock?
Just want to thank the citizens, and I want to clarify something a while ago, it didn't really have any discussion, but as far as economic development, I am not against economic development. I'm for it, but I'm for it with a full-scale plan. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Okay. Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, I just want to echo sentence of Commissioner Owens, that there's been a lot of hard work done by our people in the emergency management department, it's been greatly appreciated, and hopefully everything will go seamless this week in restoring and keeping that service back. We still continue to advertise for a number of positions, the most critical one is still trying to find people, applicants for the Utility Department. I've spent time today, will continue to spend time looking at other ways and other resources, trying to find interim help. I'd also like to have a conversation with the board to get your thoughts on public-private partnership in terms of the operations of this, of these utilities. I've had some discussions with some people on that, and I think that's an option that's worth exploring, that would need to be discussed with the board. Talking about grants, we do have a number of grants that have come our way, but we, our, our capital needs and needs in general exceed those grant dollars. We have one grant that we have no questions about, the 201, we have a $250,000 grant that has to be spent on the community center, and only on the community center. Right now, we have another $250,000 grant that has, you know, broad use for very many different types of capital improvements, other needs of the county. And then we have the American Recovery Grant money, which, which is sizable. Going to need to, to schedule some meetings soon with the board to try to look at, just not the community center, like we have the community center, we have the radio purchase that's going to be a sizable amount. We will, it's a not yet known figure, but we still, we will be paying for some of the 911 equipment, and I think we need to get together and try to evaluate in terms of the grant dollars, where do we want to apply the grant dollars, and for the other needs, you know, is it going to be through, through financing or what other means? And looking, looking at the community center, it is more than just the roof that is causing the water problem, it's also the windows, it's, it's also the walls, and there needs to be some decisions concerning the exterior walls, whether we're going to go with a reciting or some repair and treatment of the brick to try to, to make that building a watertight envelope, because until that's done, as you saw today, the, the peeling and popping paint that's on the cinder block, that's, that's... cinder block, that's not going to stop until we fix both the roof and the walls, and then give that cinder block a time to dry out, and then we can go in there and do those cosmetic changes. So there's, I think it'd be a good thing for the board in the next few weeks to be thinking about a date to have a special meeting to talk about. Staff can get together some of these needs, and making some decisions about how to proceed with the community center. And this is for the budgetary, this all gets folded in with what will be in the budget, whether, you know, we are going to proceed with financing certain things, using grant money for certain things. And, you know, I don't rule out the possibility, not that I'm advocating it either, you know, as far as your undesigned fund balance. So we just need to, I think, have those discussions as maybe a beginning point, since they are major expenses, as part of some other meetings that we'll need to have with you in terms of the budget in general.
Finally, I do thank people for coming, the citizens for coming, the citizens for speaking. I thank the commissioners for joining the tour of the community center with Representative Howard Hunter at 4 o'clock. All of them were there and present. I was pleased to see everyone in attendance, Mr. Wilson, and all the commissioners, and some of the citizens were out. Mr. Ray did a very good job. Mr. Byron was there for the school system. We also want to mention and have prayers for, when you pray, whatever way you pray, for the board chairperson, Mr. Ray Felton, who's in the hospital. He's had two operations, one yesterday and one today. So we don't want to be remiss and not lift him up in prayer tonight, and the days coming when he gets home to, you know, send him a card or something. And don't forget his wife. She's the caregiver. We forget the caregivers sometimes, so I can just imagine Ray Felton being a handful when he gets home. But let's keep him up in prayer. But we do thank you. We take notes of your comments. When you send them in, we collect them, we do. We have them, and we look at them, and we address them. You may not know that, or, you know, I get calls. I got two calls today, and I listen, and I share what I can. And when I get comments, sometimes I respond, and sometimes I don't, because I'm dishonest. I'm very careful how I put things in writing. And also, we're on live stream as well, and it all it takes one little thing to be misconstrued because we're online. And we're human. We're going to make mistakes. We're not the only ones that make mistakes. And I thank the commissioners for working together. We disagree, but we're not disagreeable. We just have different ideas and ideals. But at the end of the day, we're trying to do what's best for the future of Gates County. And I thank you for coming. We will continue to move forward with your help. You'll be hearing from us in the coming months about some things that you were asking about. And that's all we can do, is what we do, is move forward. And we pray that all of you are safe with this, I'm crying, whatever it is. It's not over. And so we thank you for coming. We're getting ready to go into a closed session, and I will say that after closed session, there will be no action taken. Sometimes people think we're going to go in and come out and vote. We're not voting on anything after we come out of closed session. I just want to give you that heads up. So now I need a motion to go into closed session for NCGS 143-138, 11A3, attorney-client privilege.
So do you?
Second?
Second.
We're in closed session.
I need a motion to come out of closed session knocking on our general statute 143-138.11a3 attorney-client privilege.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.